For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Richter. I have asked our City Administrator, Mr. Brooks, if he would offer our invocation tonight.
Our Father in heaven, we humbly bow our heads before thee this evening and give thee thanks for many blessings which thou hast bestowed upon us. We thank thee especially for this great country that we live in and the freedoms we all enjoy, and we ask thee to bless our national leaders, that they might be inspired to do those things that help us as citizens of the United States, that we may be an example to the world of how we live and the freedoms of which we enjoy and share with them. We also ask for a special blessing upon our local leaders here, especially our mayor and council tonight. They might make decisions that are beneficial and blessings to the residents and those people who visit Riverdale. We thank thee again, Father, for all that thou hast blessed us with, and we do so in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Seeing no members of the public, we will go ahead and dispense with public comment for tonight. Presentations and reports for the mayor's report. Just a reminder that the legislature is still in session, and they are starting to kind of ramp up a little bit. We're watching closely with the league on things, and they're going to let us know if there's anything we need to respond to. So just be aware of that. We might ask you to reach out to our legislators. There is also a town hall on Thursday night at Weber State with Senator Milner and Representative Hall and Representative Colford. I don't have anything right in front of me, but if you are interested in going to a meeting with them or representing the city with them, that would be a good time to reach out to them. That's all I have for the mayor's report. City Administrator stated report, Mr. Brooks?
All the department heads' reports are in the packet. Do you have any questions on any of those? Anything that you may have seen in there? Just thumbing through it here. I'll just hit a couple of the highlights. The one graph I always like to look at is the sales tax report that he's listed in there about the sales and use tax and then the combined taxes. If you're noticing that sales and use tax, we have our December report in there, which was fairly high compared to the last four years. So I think that was a good sign when I saw that. The combined sales tax, a little bit lower than last year, but as far as year-to-date goes, but not that much. I mean, we were talking, what, 20,000 roughly? Maybe not even that much. So I think those were both good indicators that the sales is still going strong, and we like to see that, especially that one. We had a good December this year, is what it boils down to. I would point out, just as an FYI more for the council, this is the other thing I was going to bring up, as I looked through the departments there. Our fire report would look a little bit different. We, our fire chief got injured last week on a fire, and he's going to be out for a little bit of time. I think he'll try and start coming back tomorrow, but he had a pretty good injury, so on a fire that's in the county somewhere. But so somebody else is filling in, so that report looks a little bit different, that's why. It wasn't Matt. Matt's just barely getting up to speed on it anyway, so it's kind of new to him. But we've kept an eye on that. He seems to be doing fairly well. As far as employee recognition goes, as I mentioned earlier, we don't have any of the anniversary kind of years. I would point out Officer McNeely, who's with the police department, has got seven years with us now. It just blows me away that he's been here that long. A couple others that I just wanted to highlight there, just because I see a lot of these reports come through, and Shears and Zog, we both picked up about the same time. And they're like machines out there. They've been really good pickups, so really happy to see that. Two very good effective years with those guys. Sonia, she's been down here in the court. If you haven't met Sonia, you need to come and introduce yourself if you want some entertainment. She's crazy, but been a lot of fun. That's a lot of personality of the city, and certainly livens things up around here. But again, all of them are fairly recent employees. The staffing authorization plan, I would point out that the fire department did hire two more guys, so that should wipe them clean as far as FTEs go. They both, I don't remember where they came from, they were both experienced firefighters, not real seasoned ones, but they did get a couple more hires in this last test, so things are looking good for them as well. And as far as that goes, the last thing I had was the community development report, and I'll turn that over to Brandon to touch on those items.
Thank you. You probably all have noticed the giant crane up on the hill, so that is getting started driving those piles.
Oh, yeah.
Have you been able to hear it?
He said he can hear it. He lives a little closer.
I live straight east of it, so down the hill, yes.
If you've been to McDonald's, you can hear it.
I can hear it.
Okay, yeah. So I sent an email out, and we've put that out on some of our social media in case we have some concerned folks. Hopefully, that'll be done by the eighth of March. I don't think so, because it seems like they had a little bit of a late start from when they anticipated, so I expect that to go a couple of weeks later than the eighth. The Kia is complete. That's been wrapped up and received their certificate of occupancy, so that project is a nice asset there on the back. Honda is progressing. You'll probably see that old building in the front come down here pretty quickly to make room for the remainder of that showroom building, so that'll be progressing. Trader Joe's permit is ready to go, so that's a two-step thing. The developer for the Ashley's building, because Ashley's owns the building and rents it to, or leases it to Trader Joe's, they will do the, what's called the shell. So they'll do the facade, the storefront, some of the minor things on the interior, like electrical and the floor and things like that, and then Trader Joe's will come in and pull some permits for their racking and whatever else they do. So hopefully, they stay on track, and we see them open sometime in June. Maybe not as obvious, the big and small building where Aaron's used to be, that's progressing along. Their signage isn't up yet, but that should be happening soon. They're working through their inspections, and then also Good Vets as well, right there at the Merrill Building. And then we just see progress on the ongoing projects at Panera and the Riverdale Townhomes, and we are working with the owners of the Riverside Flats, the apartments where Leslie's used to be, on trying to get that project stuck out of the mud and commencing. They tell me all the right things, but we'll see.
Any questions, Councilor Hawes?
I just noticed in the open-for-business section, smoked tacos was missing.
You're right. Thank you. We'll put that on the next one.
And they're really good.
They're good.
They're good.
We're trying to calm the parking down right now, so we didn't put it in there on purpose, so we'll space that out.
Does Panera have a timeline yet on when they're thinking they're going to be done?
Not that I know of. They are delayed also. The demo took longer than it was planned to, so maybe they can make that up.
They do seem to have some foundations, some concrete, right? So that's good with this weather, that they're able to get it, you know. Any other questions? Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Brooks and Mr. Cooper. We'll now move on to item F, the consent items. Number one, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the January 7, 2025 council work session and council meeting. Any changes or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. We're going to see how Shaila does here. We're going to get her going pretty quick, so see if she's still got her skills. All right, move on to action items. Number one, consideration of Resolution 2025-06, adopting the public records request policy in compliance with the Utah Government Records Access and Management Act. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned at pre-planning meeting, this is something that we already do. We've just never formally adopted a policy on that, so this is my stab at that. Grandma's a funny thing, and I think there's at least three bills in the legislature this year, and so it could change, but it won't change drastically, I don't think. They generally don't. But there's a whole process in there, what we can charge, what we can't charge, and most people are really unaware of how that works. But between this policy and what we already have in our code, we should be fine. We've been following it for some time, and we've been in compliance with the state law. I may be back here in two months with an amendment on both of those, though, depending on what the state does. But that's just the nature of the beast when you deal with grandma. That's become a big deal in the legislature for some reason, but I shouldn't say for some reason. I mean, it's valid, but we don't really have problems not complying with that. That's what's frustrating about a lot of these state laws, is we do comply. And there obviously must be some people who don't, because they keep making changes. But anyway, do you have any questions on anything that I put in there on the grandma policy proposal?
All right, Councilor Arnold.
Move to approve Resolution 2506 as stated within the packet.
202506, okay.
202506.
202506, right?
And what is it?
I think he said 25.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All right.
Whatever it states in the packet.
Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Nay, will you please poll the council?
Councilor Hanson?
Yes.
Councilor Richter?
Yes.
Councilor Hawes?
Yes.
Councilor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Perfect. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number two, consideration of Resolution 2025-07, adopting a policy on First Amendment audits. Mr. Brooks?
Again, as I mentioned at pre-planning meeting, First Amendment audits are being, it's becoming more and more popular because of the internet. These people purposely go and they approach cities or counties, and they just walk in and they start filming. And it could happen in a city council meeting. And so we need to be aware of that. I mean, anywhere where someone has a right to be, the legal right to be there, they have the legal right to record it as well, are we not?
Isn't the camera pointed off? Like, it never really came on?
No, it's streaming. It's just pointing over here.
Okay.
But anyway, I mean, I think it's important that we protect people's First Amendment rights. They have the right to come in and speak, and this is where a lot of city councils get in trouble, is somebody will come in and they start badmouthing a member of the city council, and they're not happy about something that's going on. And we just have to remember, they have that right to express that. We may not agree with it or whatever, but as long as it's still somewhat controlled without getting real hostile, they have that right. And the last thing we want to do is have somebody arrested just because we don't like the content of their speech. That's what gets us in trouble, is if we're trying to dictate what they can say. Not so much the speech itself, but we offer them that opportunity. So again, we're in compliance with the law. This policy here also lists out what we're going to do as a city. We're in the process of purchasing a bunch of signs and stuff, and they'll be posted up around the cities of various. That's the big key, is that you have to give public notice if it's not open to the public, which a lot of our places are, simply like this building here. Most of our doors have locks on them, but there's no sign saying that they're not open to the public. So we've got to get that cleaned up. But like down my hallway down there, you got HR, you got all my stuff, and you got finance stuff down there. That's not something we would ever open up to the public, because there's too much private information in there. Police department, same thing. Lobby would probably be open, just like the lobby would be here. But beyond that, there's too much private information. So we've got to designate those areas, and that's kind of what this policy is, is we're going to set that out, and you guys are giving us direction. This is what we're doing, and then we'll maintain training, and that'll be reviewed on a yearly basis, whether or not we come in and do it formally or just do it internally under administration. We'll keep up to speed on that one. So but and again, I will do some First Amendment training near the end, just to give you a couple of clips, just to see what goes on, so.
Councilor Hawes?
So when you say, like, the area down in your office's area, I mean, I understand that, but that it's not an area that would be considered open to the public, but there are times when people, when you would take people back to your office to discuss things and that kind of stuff. It's just that it's not a generally open public area that would be a First Amendment area.
Right.
Is that what you're?
Yeah, there's different classes that the courts have looked at through their, and most of these have gone up nationally, because it's a federal right. If it is one of those areas that say it, you know, maybe the senior center, one of them they used was a performing center that the city owned, and so it wasn't completely restricted, and it was sort of open to the public. Those are the gray areas that are a little bit harder. But most of ours are either it is accessible or it's not. We don't really have a lot of those gray areas. We wouldn't normally take people down that hallway. Generally, when I meet with people, I come out and meet with them in one of the conference rooms, and as would Stacy and even Cody. So that we would restrict, and obviously, in the police department, we can't. The one part that's in one of these, oh, I don't know if I recorded, I recorded, but I don't know if I brought it, but these people set up in the foyer of the police department, and they sit there and they film when a person comes in and wants to file a complaint. This is the ones that get tough. How do you draw that distinction? They're in there filming, and they have the right to be there in the lobby, but somebody's coming in to file a complaint, and so they're speaking through the window to one of our clerk personnel. And so that's one that we would have to deal with a little bit differently, because it's, that person also has a right to privacy. And so you have to weigh whose rights are what. So some of those lawsuits start off that way, and we at least try to kick them out to give some privacy to the individual. But that might be one where they might have to take them back in one of their interview rooms or something like that, so they're not in the lobby where that could be accessible to somebody who is exercising their First Amendment rights. So it's getting to be fairly complicated, and that's why we need to get some of this stuff in place to try and avoid any lawsuits on this.
So the signs will just say, like, authorized personnel only, or something like that?
Yep, and as long as the council recognizes there's places they're shut off, and anytime it's private information, that we can limit the access to that. So that's what those signs will say. Then we're okay. We're protected. So we've got to make sure we get that done fairly soon.
Okay.
Sean's building's an interesting one, because it's not one that we would necessarily keep people out of, but they're not there a lot. And so we would almost have to close it down for that reason, because we can't just open it up and give people free access to his building, because there's a lot of tools and equipment and stuff out there that we wouldn't want, so.
It's not really a foyer.
Right. Yeah, he's got a little one there, but even that one, so just off the foyer, you know, they've got their water monitors and stuff like that. So that's, you're starting to get into private information there. So that one's a little bit tougher. Police, I think, is pretty easy. This one's pretty easy. Rich, I don't know that he would have a whole lot, maybe just some offices that they would protect, but most of that one would be open. But we're just going to have to go through them on a case-by-case basis and figure them out, how we're going to mark them.
Councilor Arnold?
Move to approve Resolution 2025-07 as stated within the packet.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Nay, will you please poll the council?
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Councilor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilor Hanson?
Yes.
Councilor Richter?
Yes.
Councilor Hawes?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Everything on the internet is the Fourth Amendment, is what they go after the cops when they're like, can I get your ID? And they're like, can you articulate a crime that I've committed? The one I saw today was Cedar City. This sergeant in Utah did this. It went by their car, and it was the Cedar City police, and they were failing miserably.
I saw one from Sandy City today when I was going through my stuff that they used. Ironically, I gave this same spiel, this training and stuff, about two months ago to another city, and one of the council members, two days later at her work, they got hit with one. So she called me up. She was all excited, because she felt like she was an expert in it or something. But yeah, you just need to be ready. I mean, it's not like it's a big deal. You just don't react how they want you to react. They get all those views online, and they make money off it, so they're trying to bait you, but we just don't go there. Thank you.
Thanks for being proactive with this. Item number three, consideration of Resolution 2025-08, providing discretion for waiving or reducing penalties for late or non-payment of utility bills. Mr. Brooks?
Again, we brought a couple of these down to the council here the last couple of years. We don't see a lot of them. I don't want you thinking that this is a major problem, because it's pretty rare. But we don't have a policy in place either. And so one of the ways, every time I feel like I bring one of these down here, you all look at me like, can't you handle this thing? Because they're kind of piddly sometimes. And no, I can't, because I don't have anything. This is a way of maybe giving us some options there that we could handle if it was justified. And again, none of these are going to be that big. I think that one was a little over $100, and the other one was less than $100 that I remember, so they weren't big. But it does require us to report back to the council if we do end up working with somebody on that. And again, it's not the base fee at all. It's penalties. That's all we're dealing with, is staff. So anything to do with the base fee, that's in your discretion. And so if you want to waive that, it's your call. It's not ours. So it's a money thing there. That's a budgetary issue that has to come back before council. Any questions on those? I put a big, huge list at the end of that thing that lists the reasons we wouldn't justify it, which I think kind of helps us a lot. It's a good list for us just to point to.
Councilor Arnold? Well, Councilor Hawes, did you have any recommendations for language on that, or any changes?
Yeah, I I understand what the intent is. It sounds a little strange, but I'm okay with approving it the way it is.
I would never do anything strange, Stacy.
Councilor Arnold?
I'd like to change the date. Those days from the 10 days and 14 days to be somewhat within reason, of reasonable expediency of some sort, so we can have the city council meetings or something like that. Because 10 days and 14 days might, I mean, if we have to come in here for a meeting and we have it canceled for everything except for the fee, a fee waiver or something like that, that we do something.
That's probably a good addition. I would just make that as part of your motion, and we'll just do it right per interlineation, right on the.
So do we have a number that we're looking at, or?
I would just state it within a reasonable amount of time or something to that effect. I'm fine with that.
Councilor Arnold?
Move to approve Resolution 2025-08 as stated within the packet, with the exception of the, it was 5-4, I think, 5.4, with the 10 days and 14 days removed, that we can add language to be handled as quickly as reasonably able, even if we put something in language with, i.e., city council meetings, dot, 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 or something.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion, Councilor Hawes?
I just point out that the 14-day language is in Section 3, which is the decision timeline. The 10 days is the appeal process timeline, and that I don't think that we necessarily want to change. That is how long the person has once they get the decision to file their appeal. I mean, I'm not sure 10 days is the number of days that we necessarily want to put, or, but I don't know that we want to put within a reasonable thing on that part.
Councilor Stevens?
And also, would you clarify, when you say days, clarify business days or calendar days, whichever one you're doing there?
It says business days in there.
We would probably want them to be business days, just because we're not here on weekends, and so.
And you might have a holiday.
Right, right.
So would we be okay on that motion to change the 5-3 from 14 days to a reasonable amount of time, and leaving the 5-4 to 10 days that they have to appeal?
10 business days.
10 business days to appeal. Okay, the motion agrees. Does the second agree?
Yes.
Okay, motion and a second agrees. Any other discussion on that?
So just to be clear, on Section 3, where it says, waiver authority will issue a written decision within?
A reasonable amount of time.
Okay, and then on the appeal process, the residents may appeal to the next level within?
10 business days.
You're going to leave it at 10?
Well, and our decision should have something to say, it's denied, you have 10 business days to appeal, to file an appeal.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that would be either the finance director or the city administrator, because at that point, then it comes to council, and that's a final decision. So unless they want to take it to court, I guess.
Okay. All right. Ms. Nay, will you please poll the council?
Councilor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilor Hawes?
Yes.
Councilor Richter?
Yes.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Councilor Hanson?
Yes.
All right, great. That passes unanimously as well. We'll now move on to the training portion of our meeting, presented by Mr. Brooks.
All right. Shaila, poll one of those up. Let's go with the number eight one. Yeah, on the titles that I sent them to you. Yes, one says, they said like First Amendment number eight and First Amendment number one.
The first one, okay.
Right. Now, yeah, I'll let it, just watch.
They're on social media and known for getting in people's faces, when now the state is instructing its 50,000 employees on how to respond to these types of verbal attacks. But we also wanted to hear from the people responsible for these so-called fraudits. So tonight, a popular social media star is opening up to Seven Action News reporter Jim Kirchner about what's at stake.
Oh, they're grabbing me. They're grabbing me. Am I being detained?
Hey, don't grab me.
Get out of here. I want to.
You made contact with me. What's your name and badge number, officer?
Hey, do you want to tell me your name? Because I'd be happy to help you out.
Here you go, guys. The walk of shame.
Freedom News Now has been posting videos for several years. The person behind it, Justin McDermott.
There has never been a better time than now to do your first First Amendment audit.
Can you tell me what you're doing? Anything? We have somebody calling about you being out here.
This video is from 2017. McDermott is outside the Warren Tank Plant, a federal contractor. He's wearing a full-face mask long before COVID, refusing to answer questions about who he is, why he's there, if he has any weapons.
I mean, these people present themselves, I mean, officers are killed in the line of duty, trying to do exactly what officer we and those officers were doing.
Are they asking legitimate questions?
Oftentimes, they are legitimate questions, and I'm okay with questions from officers, and my auditing style has changed throughout the years. There's absolutely no doubt that he was attempting to provoke the officers.
Oh, they're grabbing me. They're grabbing me. Am I being detained?
The police commissioner says the plan can be to get even more.
File a lawsuit. They're going to get a settlement from a city. They're possibly going to get the officer terminated.
The trend prompted this email to go out to 50,000 state employees, telling them how to uphold the general rights of the public while remaining vigilant for suspicious behavior. The email continues, "The encounters often include behavior that's designed to provoke a reaction that could be viewed as a violation of First Amendment rights. Do you believe that some behavior is deliberately provocative?" Next question. The email continues.
Shaila, that's good. I wanted to leave that in there, just so you can see what you're dealing with sometimes, you know. Next question. Go on to the next. Now, this one's kind of fun, but just because you see this happening, I could see this happening in the city or even in city council here, so. See, they're purposely ignoring him. They don't want to look at the guy. Now, that would be worrisome there. You got private information.
Wasn't that sign posted, employees only, that you just walked by?
Yeah.
Good to have the signs on the wall rather than the door if they open out.
Doesn't really say. We've just got to have them there, and then we can stop them.
But if they can't see them, you know.
Right.
Did a good job of ignoring them.
Hello? Ah, no, ma'am. I'm just walking around taking some pictures of video.
Ah, no ma'am. I'm just walking around taking some pictures and video. So I'm just taking some pictures and video, sitting here. Ah, for myself. Independent journalist, an independent journalist gathering content for a story.
Okay, but don't, did you ask permission to do that?
I didn't know I had to have permission.
I didn't either.
Yeah, it's a.
She actually handles it really well here.
It's not something I have to have permission for. But yeah, so that's the mayor's office, huh?
So you're just wanting to see how everything's planned to work?
Basically I'm working on a story on, on a ponte dock. So checking out the city buildings, the inside.
So are you the ones that post some pictures on Facebook?
No, ma'am. What happened? What, what do you mean? Well, the whole, the whole time I'm in here.
See, and this is where it's tough. Some people don't like to be photographed, you know, and where do you draw that line right here?
Well, no, I mean, and, and I never, I never just, I never just put anybody on video unless they engage. Yeah, I mean, unless, unless somebody engages with me, I'd, I'd never intend on, on just coming and recording them or anything. But I'm a journalist, uh, well, from O'Fay County. I'm a journalist and an activist, constitutional rights activist. Uh, I have, I have a website. I have YouTube. Just basically you go around different areas and, and you know, check out the city buildings.
So what's it for?
Uh, well, I'll be happy to tell you once I finish, once I finish walking around. But don't want to divulge that yet. It's currently, uh, currently a work in the progress.
I know, and they're naked right there on the desk.
Currently levitating to prove all that.
Nicest room in the house, or the nicest view in the house right there.
That's probably good. Shelly, I just kind of wanted to give you an example. Now that one, to his credit, actually, he wasn't as bad as a lot of them are. Some of the other ones I looked up had some pretty foul language and stuff. They get real hostile. And especially some of them even in city councils, people getting arrested and stuff, and it got really carried away. So the whole idea is that we're prepared and, cause it could happen. Somebody could walk in here. We're not expecting it. They're coming in with a camera and they have that right. Or they can come up and speak during public comment time and they have that right to speak. It starts getting a little bit more dicey when they start attacking people and if they're being belligerent and swearing and things like that. We don't have to go completely overboard when it starts to get out of hand. That's where it's going to fall on the mayor's shoulders and probably myself as a city attorney to try and guide you guys on that. But the, the key is, is that we don't react the way they want us to react. And, and start getting all, you know, freaky shit and yelling at them and fighting with them. Cause that's exactly what they want. They get their, their money and their notoriety by the number of posts they get on Facebook. So the last thing we want to do is give them a reason to put us on there. So there's not a whole lot more other than I've got a list of things. We've already got a number of those already accomplished for the city. That's in the process, but I just wanted you as a council to be aware, it could happen right here in city council meeting. So if it does, don't panic. We'll just go on with our meeting like we always do. Just treat them with kindness and go on. You, you see like once she told him, I really don't like my picture taken and stuff. To his credit, he didn't show it. Then he went around the corner and stuff like that. They're not all going to do that. In fact, most of them, when they're dealing with police officers, they won't. They're right in their face and they're very belligerent. It's, it gets way out of hand sometimes, but as long as the police officer doesn't react the way they want him to, they usually calm down pretty soon. So. Any questions on any of that stuff?
I had one. So like for open or public comment because, because we have it in print that we try to limit it to three minutes. I think at three minutes we're okay to say, hey.
Yep. As long as we give them some time. The courts have kind of said between three and five minutes. So we're okay.
And we can, we can say, hey, it's, you know, we usually only give three, three or four minutes. Like you need to sit down.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we can. The one thing is, is personal attacks because our rules and procedures prohibit that. But sometimes like some of those, you, you want to watch a couple of those because there were some legitimate concerns that people had towards a council member or a mayor or both. And they still have the right to voice that opinion that they may disagree with something you've done in your personal life or even your business life or something like that. I don't know that I would cut that out, but if they start getting real, I mean, again, you can still control it as far as the amount of time, just not the actual contact. You can't tell them what they can and cannot say.
One of the things you've said before and I know Mayor Searle, Norm used to say this, is the time, three minutes, about three minutes. And it would also say, try to avoid being repetitive. You know, so if you have three or four people all saying the same thing, but a lot, and I've watched these like a school board or whatever, they, they say the same things kind of over and over. So by saying avoid being repetitive, that also kind of sets some parameters.
But they can.
But they can.
They can. They can.
We can try to discourage it.
But you can, yeah.
It's like you can go over three to five minutes.
Yeah.
Well, and the other key to that, which we have in our rules is we don't comment back. That takes the wind out of their sails because they're trying to get a reaction from you. If y'all just sit there, it's over. You say, thank you very much. That's it. It's the end of the story. They didn't get the reaction they want. You're not going to be on, on the internet that night. So if we follow what we've done traditionally, we should be fine. But yeah, it's a new fad. You're going to see it sooner or later. If all the insurance companies are talking about it, they're, they're making money somehow because we're paying for it.
Glad I didn't get new furniture because I don't have the nicest office out there. I have my old furniture.
Any other questions on any of that?
Having been on both sides, um, I understand the thing I, I did before we had the cameras to, to record the meetings. I recorded a city council meeting one time. I didn't have enough videotape for the meeting, but, and then the same thing. I have spent quite a bit of time refining a, a diatribe to try to limit it to three minutes. It's not easy sometimes, but you know, the thing that, that is obviously, and this is, this is what the, the police chief was talking about. You know, if this guy then shows up with his AR-15 and goes to town on, you know, the, these offices. And then, you know, in the investigation, they find this videotape of he went in, videotaped the entire office building, knowing exactly where to go and which offices who was in. So he could specifically target, you know, that, that's the thing that is scary.
Right.
But at the same time, it's, it's one of those things where it's really hard, you know, how do you know what the intent is? On, you know, on somebody that's, that's doing that kind of thing.
Come on up to the mic, chief. Make sure it's on. Up. Push the button. It's the button up.
I heard it. Can you hear me?
So we've had situations like this my whole career and we've had individuals who have wanted to voice their concerns towards police officers, city managers, mayors. I mean, some of you guys probably have letters perhaps from certain individuals. And the way we've always handled it is, you know, we've had concerns about people. We've always honored their rights to come into these public meetings. We've, we've killed them with kindness, but we always kept an eye on them. And so from what you were saying is this, you know, if they're in here scouting and doing these type of things, we're going to handle it accordingly. We're going to uphold their constitution. We're going to let them do their audit, but we're also going to make sure all the employees and the city staff and political leaders are aware of who this individual is. So you know, you can kind of have your head on a swivel, try to mitigate some of these things. And so there's been plenty of times where we've posted a picture at the offices next door saying, hey, if this person comes in, call next door. We'll send some over. Kind of just come hang out to keep things safe. There's been times where I literally slept in front of someone's house waiting to make sure they didn't come to a city meeting because of their behavior. I didn't sleep, but I stayed there all night. So with, with your concerns, like from the police department's perspective, and we have these situations, you know, we're limited on what we can do, but we always take extra precautions that often people don't even know. And so if we get something like this going on in the city, you guys will be the first to know about it. And you know, like I says, we, we still got to kill them with kindness and uphold their rights, but you just never know if it can go from this to, to the worst case scenario. So we always plan for the worst. So give that two cents to hope, make you guys feel at ease, I hope. And that's all I got.
And I do like the, the, um, the way that our offices are locked down basically such that somebody couldn't just walk down the hallway like that guy did.
Yeah.
And find those types of, of offices open. You notice that he didn't go in any of the offices.
Right. Just walked down the hall.
He was very, you know, it, it was pretty obvious that he was not going in offices. But, um, yeah, the fact that we have a locked door that would prevent him from walking down that hallway is what I think is the proper thing to do.
And just like anything, you're going to find good guys and bad guys. He was one of the better ones. You watch some of those other ones on YouTube and they're not all like that. So we need to be ready. That's the whole key. That's all I had on that, Mayor.
Okay. Any other, just a quick question. You kind of walk into, let's just use this room for example. There's a decorum just by observation. Now, when I first got on the council several years ago, there was a hot topic and there was news media here. And the guy would come up and set a, a microphone for his, and then he had a tripod and he had a camera. He put the camera right behind where Shelly is sitting. And so he was kind of, anyway, the point of it is, is, is that cameraman and the reporter was standing over there, uh, kind of felt like he had the, the lay of the room. And, and wasn't held by any bounds or anything. Hypothetically, you get somebody like that. Do we have something that says this is the decorum, have a seat please? And as opposed to standing over there with the camera, swiveling the camera, you know, it's a little nervy. It was my second council meeting, I think, but it was like, okay, so is, is there a decorum? Do we, do we need to post something? That's, that's really the question. It's a rhetorical question.
Well, and, and I can respond to that a little bit. I mean, we have to give them reasonable accommodations to exercise their first minimum rights. And so that's why that guy does that is because he knows he can. That's something we would probably let somebody do. Now, if it started getting out of hand, that's where it falls back on the mayor's shoulders. And then he could say, okay, enough's enough. Right. We'll point fingers at him, but, and, and I might even jump into that if they start talking amongst themselves, just like we would in any decorum in our meeting at that point. And, and that happens too, in a lot of those videos. They start shouting back and forth between each other and shouting to the police officers and then shouting to the council members. At that point, it's time we can step into it because that doesn't need to be reasonably accommodated. But setting up a camera and microphones, that's probably one we'd have to go with.
Okay, then let me, let me take this a little step further. That camera back there points towards the council and the mayor. All right. And, and we get a profile of the people in the docket there. If they're at a public meeting and they're, and they're filming the audience, is that acceptable? Not acceptable?
It probably would be, but there, there's that gray area you're getting in that it's not fair to those people, but is it us to stop that? I mean, he's publicly entitled to be here and do that. If they don't want to be filmed, they'd have to leave.
I can't, when I'm watching our YouTube, I can't see who's in, you know, maybe it's in the back of the heads, but that's it. Even when they get up to speak, you can't really see them.
I mean, they, they open themselves up potentially there to some civil actions if somebody wanted to go that route. So they take a risk at that if they wanted to, just like that lady in there when she said, I don't like being filmed. I don't want to be filmed. To his credit, he did go around the corner a little bit. So they don't all do that. In fact, and usually if it's a police officer, they'll never do that.
What if somebody wanted to come up into this area?
No, we'd say no on that. That's a safety thing.
But if you're attending here, there's no expectation of privacy.
No. Public, public locations, public grounds. They own them. They're, they're the public.
We can film it, they can film it.
Right.
I have, I think having a little gate right here would be prudent and having it right here. So you can't come up here. I mean, just have it marked out so they can't come around to you or.
Yeah.
Just say an authorized personnel on here.
I went around today and the only one I found was that one right there that's marked on a door. And I think it was Stacy, somebody I was talking to last week, oh yeah, we got them all over the place. And maybe we do in other buildings, but we don't in this building. But they do have locks on them. And so I would make that argument, but I would like to have them marked as well so that I don't have to run into that. If somebody comes in and demands to go down one of those hallways, I want to be able to say no on that.
Counselor Hawes, did you have something? Anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. We'll now move on to the comments section of our meeting. Any comments from the city council for this meeting?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens.
You brought up something in the first of the meeting where you said that a couple of our representatives were having a town hall Thursday night.
Yeah.
If, if we were to attend, an individual was to attend. Is there a concern that we, you would like to see expressed to the representatives this time?
Is the town hall education based?
Uh, is your microphone on? It, it says, join me for an upcoming town hall, Weaver State University on February 20th from seven to eight PM. It's a great opportunity to hear updates from the legislative session, ask questions and share your thoughts on issues that matter most to you. That's from a representative hall. I think it's just going to have all three of them there. And I, I think it's just kind of an open forum.
They do have an open mic and that's why, is there any, if I were to attend or anybody else, I'm not going to limit it to myself. I don't want to be selfish with this. Is there a concern that if you could have their ear for two or three minutes, what would the issue be? It's a, go ahead. If there's, if you can't think of anything.
I'm, I'm okay.
I would just be a little bit careful with that. Not, I, I understand what you're doing, Barton. I think it's admirable, but we don't have this on the agenda. And that makes me more nervous than anything.
This is something he brought up.
Right. But a meeting, but not specific topics and, and to, to make that decision, we'd almost have to take a vote on it. And where that's not on the agenda, I don't want to go there for that reason. If there was just some general stuff you guys wanted to, I mean, without taking a consensus or something like that, I'm a little more comfortable with that one. But we don't want to get in trouble either by doing it where we didn't give a public notice on it.
Wouldn't want that to happen. But if you bring it up, expect a follow-up.
Counselor Hawes.
We wouldn't run into any issues if all of us were having, were to show up there.
Not as long as you're not talking to yourselves, you'd be okay.
If we're talking to each other.
If, if three of you are talking together about a city thing, we got a problem.
I'm, I'm not going, so.
But that doesn't take away your rights as an individual and a citizen to go to those things and express it, even, even if it is something that's city related that you feel strongly about, you're, you don't give that up. I just don't want to take it as a vote or a position that the city takes without us putting that on an agenda.
And you got to be really careful to go in there and start saying that you're from Riverdale City.
Oh, I do every time. I, I introduce myself as a Riverdale City Council person.
And as a Riverdale City Council person, I want this on behalf of the city. I don't think so. You say, I'm a Riverdale City Council member and personally I say this.
I, I introduced myself as a citizen and as elected council member.
That's probably why you don't have their phone numbers.
And that's why I get all their texts because they have mine.
All right. Anything else? Counselor Hanson?
Um, no. We're going to see the Boy Scouts, not Boy Scouts, the Scouts tomorrow. I think it's the Riverdale troop.
You're going to see them?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
I don't know.
That's so good. Yeah.
The Weiboles, I think.
Good. That's good.
Anything I should tell them? I guess you can't tell me if there is. I was just going to show them pictures of the playground you guys picked.
When are you going to see them? Like?
Thursday.
Thursday. Okay.
I think so.
Cause I'm out of town. Okay. That's good. I'm glad they're meeting with you. That's fantastic. And Counselor Richter?
Yeah, U City Council's meeting, they're doing their, their normal April Easter egg thing, but also doing a little something for Patrick's Day. So expect to see those. Those are fun little events. The kids are excited about it. So.
Excellent. I would really like to see that. Excellent. I would really like to see that grow stronger and get them more involved and get more kids in it. We had the opportunity to go down to the local officials day at the legislature, and they bring the U City councils down there. And South Ogden had a huge one. Tons of cities had big, active U City councils, and I'd love to see ours be stronger, yeah, to grow up. So anything you can do or any support I can give with that, or any help that you need, please let me know.
Rich does a good job on that.
Yeah. Excellent. Okay, any comments from the city staff?
No, we have nothing further.
I just had a quick comment. I just wanted to thank the city employees for all they do. They do so much behind the scenes that kind of takes loads off of our shoulders. Chief Warren has been dealing with a resident that has some questions and some concerns about some speed limits and some traffic patterns and stuff, and Chief Warren's always so professional. He's got the printouts. These are the speeds of all the vehicles that have gone by. These are the traffic counts from three, you know, three to six o'clock, and and so when he arms himself with that and goes over to the resident, it diffuses the situation just such a great deal, and he'll send one of his officers over there, and then you know, like, I've said stuff about Mr. Brooks all the time. He's always available. I text him on Sunday nights and all these times, but, you know, we had a snowstorm, and the plows were out, and I took a little bit of ribbing about the plowing in the driveways, but really, they came back and said, "I'm just kidding. We're so glad they came out, so glad they cleared those roads." And then Mr. Cooper, last Thursday night, we had the Lions Club meeting in the evening, late in the evening, and he shows up and just gives a really professional, you know, he was their guest speaker. And so these guys are here, they're here tonight, they're out doing things all the time, and we just appreciate you guys so much. It's, I don't I don't think the residents realize how many extra hours and how much extra stuff is going on. Like, it's real easy to say, to complain, and I years ago, I would have been one of those guys complaining about the city. It's real easy to sit back and say, "Oh, City Hall, they don't do anything, you know? There's potholes, or there's whatever, whatever, whatever problems bothering somebody," but these guys really go above and beyond, and, you know, the Lions Club loved having him there, and like I said, Chief Warren's just always giving me so much information. This is what we're doing. This is how we're handling things, keeping me out of it, which I appreciate beyond, you know, even if I don't answer your emails, I'm seeing them. Please know that I'm my family is thankful to you that I'm not over sitting at that resident's house on a whatever night, having to go through all that. I will go through it if I have to, but I really appreciate the city staff and all they do, so. With that, we need a motion to adjourn. Oh, whoops, we got another comment.
It just made me think of something. So we had three, I don't know if you heard about this, but the three officers, there was three officers down at the bottom of Ritter Drive doing a, like, kind of a radar sting thing. Well, they had the radar. Yeah, I stopped. I stopped, and I was like, "Dude, I've never seen a sting like this before," and he was like, "Whoop, whoop, over the lawn." Made me laugh. It was pretty tough.
He had a lot of hellos and a few other ones with just a few fingers.
Oh, really?
Not a whole wave, not all the hand.
He hit his siren and over the loudspeaker told me to move along, so. I'm like, I gotta spend more time with the police, because they don't know who I am, so.
You do need to spend more time, because they're great. They're so good. All right. Seeing no other comments, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion to a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you. All right, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All right, and there we are, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Steve, did you watch the South Jordan nod it? Did you watch the South Jordan nod it?
Yeah, he's a traffic guy.
It was bad, like, years ago. It's been going on for years. One thing that made me...